Director of the Board, we are in for a wonderful opportunity to meet some extraordinary young people.
I had the opportunity to spend a couple hours with them recently as part of a very innovative program that I know board members know well and they look forward to this opportunity every year. I want to thank them for being willing to come and thank their teachers and other staff who do amazing work with them every day. And I'm pleased to recognize our Director of Special Education, Janerki, who will kick us off with an opportunity to learn more about Project Search.
Thank you, Dr. Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Garcia.
I am also here.
Thank you.
Sometimes alphabetical order isn't that important.
And now I've totally lost track, so.
I'm next.
Thank you. Director Workman.
I am here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. 3.0, comments to the Board. We invite community members to communicate with Board members by mail or phone call. Your perspective is valuable and we're always happy to listen or provide information. Time at Board meetings is also provided for those who prefer to speak to the Board in person. As the Board Chair, I think I need to continue to make it clear that Minnesota School Board Association guidelines state that comments to the Board are not intended to be comments to the community as they would be at some other governmental meetings. This Board does not publish the emails that you send us. We don't record and broadcast the phone conversations we have with you. And we don't record and broadcast the comments you may want to share with us at these meetings. Each speaker will have three minutes. We ask you to respect this time limit when your name is called. Please have a seat in front of the microphones at this table. State your name and whether you are a resident of this school district. If you would like a response or further conversation, please let us know and we'll be very happy to contact you after the meeting. Our first speaker this evening is Melanie Christensen.
Chair Marvin and Directors of the Board, we are in for a wonderful opportunity to meet some extraordinary young people. I had the opportunity to spend a couple hours with them recently as part of a very innovative program that I know board members know well and they look forward to this opportunity every year. I want to thank them for being willing to come and thank their teachers and other staff who do amazing work with them every day. And I'm pleased to recognize our Director of Special Education, Janerki, who will kick us off with an opportunity to learn more about Project Search.
Thank you, Dr. Bacell and Board members for having us here tonight. Just briefly, I just want to share that we have a great leadership team. We have wonderful support from student parents. If you could just give a wave, I would love to recognize those that are in the room, Project Search parents and leadership team.
Yes.
Thank you. Without their support, we would not be as successful as we are. This is our seventh year in collaboration with Mayo Clinic with the Project Search program. We have five student interns who will be graduating this spring in search of new employment. And this is a great way for these students to learn the entry-level skills that they're going to need to be able to gain employment. So we appreciate their work and you five may please come on up here and I will start us off with a video. All right, and Kevin is going to start us off tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you about our journey through Project Search. Learning about Mayo Clinic history, we discovered that the Mayo brothers loved traveling the Mississippi River from people from diverse locations and all walks of life. They discussed issues, formed friendships, and provided medical care at stops along the riverbank. For us, Project Search has been our journey, which is why we chose the theme "Journey to Work."
Our journey began on August 30th, 21. Our first day of Project Search. Project Search is a program for students 18 to 21 who receive support services in the Washington Public Schools along with our team from many different areas. Mayo Clinic and the school districts partner together. Students work in their 10-week unpaid internships in a different Mayo Clinic department. The goal of Project Search is to help us to learn and work skills so that we can get the job that we are interested in. My name is Olivia Daly. My clinic rotation is at Chatterhouse. A task list that I'm working on, including is delivering practice to the residents and facilitating the services during dusting in the vacuum comment areas. When I started at Project Search, I could not find my way around the Mayo Clinic campus. But now I'm more confident in navigating them to my sites. I become more confident talking to people and advocating for myself by speaking up. I become more confident talking to people and advocating for myself by speaking up and asking questions. Project Search has helped me learn to manage my time as I complete the tasks that were given to me at my job site.
There is a lot to discover on our journey. We started the year with three weeks of orientation, learned how to get around the downtown Mayo Clinic campus on both the street and subway level. This wasn't an easy task, as internship sites are located from one end of the campus to the other. We completed several Mayo Clinic learning modules covering topics like Mayo Clinic history, core value safety training, confidentiality, and site trains. We had a lot to learn, but we were excited and became better prepared for our first internship. My name is Tyler Bell. My second internship was at Health Sciences, and the tasks that I worked on included packaging and labeling folders, removing and sorting surveys, and collating packets for research studies. Some of the work skills that I learned include being task-oriented, able to meet deadlines, and working in a professional environment. Through Project Search, I have learned how important it is to stay focused at my job site and not go off into a whole other world. I have learned to use feedback to improve my skills.
Thank you. Learning is the next part of our journey. We are the only five students in the Rochester Public School that can say that our class is the Mayo Clinic. Our day starts at seminary. In the classroom where we bridge job skills, learning workplace communication, and develop our personal skills. We work on our career portfolio, we identify skills and strengths with our resume, discuss work issues, progress, and update our support team with progress weekly email. Weekly email from 9 o'clock to 2:30, we are at our internship site. We return to the classroom to discuss our day progress and reflect our journal, our day, and at 3 o'clock. My name is Ali Yusin. My second internship was at Environmental Services. I learned how to clean services on Mayo Clinic campus. I stand, stand tight, stand tight, and vacuum, and sleeve study room, and keep my cart stocked with needed supplies. My work skill that I improved, including communication with my team, better time management, and private cleaning methods. Since starting Project Search, I have changed by gaining more confidence. I have learning to accept and learning from my feedback.
As we continue our journey to work, we build confidence and independence. Mayo Clinic has partnered with the Rochester Public Schools since 2015. We learn valuable works, valuable skills, working side by side with our teams at our work sites. We also gain a better understanding of professional behavior in real-life situations. The skills we gain help us at work, but also help us be more independent at home. Even our parents have noticed that our confidence level has increased. Our current Project Search sites include Central Services Eisenberg, Central Services St. Mary's, Department of Medicine, Clean Services, Environmental Services Charlestown House, Department of Laboratory Medicine and Physiology, Central Processing, Food Service, Pediatrics, Health Science, Human Resources, Media Support Service, Supply Chain Management.
My name is Eric Shala. My second internship was at Food Service, where I worked in an industrial-sized kitchen. I learned good customer service skills by serving employees, visitors, and patients in the cafeteria. I also prepared packaged and labeled food items, asking another task that I learned. Our at Food Service was to restock containers and condiments. And Project Search, I improved on many of my work skills, including time management, working as part of a team, and being organized. I have changed since the start of Project Search. I am more independent and make decisions on my own when I'm at work, at home, or out in the community. My confidence level has increased, and I have become sure of myself and open to exploring a variety of new job opportunities. Project Search has made me proud of my accomplishments.
The last step of our journey is starting our career. We are excited about the possibility of becoming competitively employed. Competitive employment is defined as working 16 hours a week or more, making at least minimum wage, nonseasonal, and working alongside coworkers with and without disabilities. We may have completed our Project Search journey, but we are just beginning our journey to work. We will continue to have support and forever be part of the Project Search team even after graduation. We are fortunate to have the opportunity to work, to continue to work with Don Kirchner at the Mayo Clinic, Lori Ackerman at Opportunity Services, Mike Net at Vocational Rehabilitation, and Mary Lee at Olmsted County on our journey to work. We would also like to thank the Project Search leadership team. We can't forget Carlisle, our Project Search instructor, and our skills trainers, who work with us each day and teach us many of our valuable work skills, Carol and Julie.
My name is Kevin Kopick. My current rotation is at Central Services at the Methodist Hospital. The tasks I perform at this site include navigating Methodist Hospital, delivering supplies to various floors, packaging sterilized equipment, and restocking the equipment. Some of the skills I learned at Project Search include problem solving, performing tasks without a task list, and communicating with my coworkers. Being a Project Search intern has changed me in many ways. I've become more responsible for myself by making my own phone calls rather than having to be reminded. I also participate more in group activities and discussions, both in the classroom and at my work sites. I have gained confidence in doing more than I thought I was able to do. We would like to thank the school board for their support of Project Search. Your support and this opportunity to speak with you has allowed us to take our journey to work, and we are excited about our futures. Do you have any questions for us?
Go ahead, Mr. Barlow.
Well, not so much a question. I wanted to commend you. I appreciate, number one, how you support each other. As each of you shared your journey, each of you were listening and showing support. Certainly a lesson for the rest of us. We could definitely benefit from that. And then part of the skill set that several of you mentioned you have developed along the way, communication, confidence, learning from feedback, better time management. I think some of us maybe need to enroll in Project Search because we struggle with many of those things. But, you know, congratulations, and I'm sure you will, as you continue your journey, enjoy much success. Thank you.
You all are amazing. Thank you. So my question is, of all the jobs that you did, and I got to glimpse you doing many of those jobs, which was your favorite? Which did you like the most? I have to say, in the time I spent with you, I thought what Ali was doing with putting the tubes in the thing was like, I would want to do that. But what were some of, what was, if you had to pick one of the many things you've done at Mayo Clinic, what was, what was your favorite? What did you like the most? Could we hear that from, if you were willing to share, hear that from everybody? And you can pass if you don't want to. Want to start?
Yeah, I liked all the sites that I was in. Food Service, Central Processing, and Central Services.
So everything, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? What was your favorite?
My favorite part was, my favorite part was at Vinyl Services. My favorite part is like doing the curved glasses with two methods.
Awesome.
My favorite internship site was Health Sciences, because I had never gotten to try a office kind of setting job. And it was, it's really different to try something new and get to know it better.
My favorite is Central Processing and Central Services. One, uh, I sent you processing the tube.
Yeah.
It's interesting. And I sent the service because I get to deliver plastic from multiple floors. And plus, I get to move around.
I liked Food Service and Environmental Service. And Food Service, I did because I did like help the customers and serve whatever they wanted. And then Environmental Service, I did like move around and keep, you know, clinic clean for the patients. But the one thing I didn't like was cleaning the curved glass. That was, that was hard glass.
You were good at it, I saw you. They need you there, they got a lot of glass. Thank you for...
Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. I, listening to your presentation, I don't know if some of you probably could see, I know Ali, you were watching me. I was getting a little teary-eyed. I am so incredibly impressed with all of you and the work that you've done. And I'm also very proud of the way that you represent, not just yourselves, but also the Rochester Public School District. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I'm happy to support the work that you're doing and for other students to come. So thank you for the work you do.
Thank all of you. You've taught us a lot, and your presentations were wonderful. We're really proud to have you here.
We'll see you at your graduation.
Excellent. We will move on then to 4.02, Student Recognitions, the 2022 Minnesota State Science and Engineering Fair Award recipients. Dr. Pecow.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, actually, the next four items are all involving initiatives that touch the leadership of our able Executive Director of Community Education, Amy Icke. And so I'm going to recognize Amy for this item, and then as the chair's prerogative, you can continue to flow through the next four items without needing to bounce back to me. So Amy, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to invite Lisa Higgs over, as well as any students from the State Science Fair, if you would come up, please, and any building coordinators for our Regional STEM Fair. And we can just kind of form a line behind the chairs here, if you would, facing the board.
Thank you so much for allowing us to come. And for me, this is actually very special, because we had to go to a virtual fair for our second year this year. And so for a lot of these students, this is the first time I have actually seen their faces unless they had participated three years ago. So thank you so much for having us here. We had just about 130 middle school and high school students participating in the Regional Science Fair this year. And from that, we were able to forward 37 projects involving 45 students who moved on to the Minnesota State Science and Engineering Fair. As always, the students represent our community very well. As you can see in this slide, we had a lot of high honors from our students. And that doesn't even include some more community-driven awards that come from sponsors. And so our students have continuously done an excellent job. This year, we have two high school projects that were forwarded from the Rochester Regional STEM Fair that are going this weekend to the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, otherwise known as ISF. And those students were Margaret Hu from Century and Christine Song from Mayo. And in an amazing turn of events, the State Science Fair also forwarded two of our students. I believe they only are able to forward five or six. So to get two additional students going for Rochester is amazing. And those students are Isha Kapoor from Mayo and Jeffrey Wang from Mayo. Christine Song also was a finalist for the National Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, which is for a research paper that she wrote about her project. So they do amazing, amazing work. I also want to be sure to recognize that this year, we had 70 students who participated in a mentorship opportunity through their high school or middle school with our partners, Ora Cooley and the Mayo Graduate School of Biomedical Sciences. And we recently, in April, had 24 students participating in a pilot STEM mentorship program at Riverside Elementary. We just had their final STEM Fair last Friday, and it was so much fun. They had such a great time showing their posters to their parents and teachers. And that was made possible with funding from the Rochester Public School Foundation. And we also had mentors from the Graduate School at Mayo. We had a number of engaged professionals from the STEM community who mentored with us there, and the University of Minnesota Rochester. I'm going to just turn this over to the students in one second. But before I do, I want to recognize Joanne Mache, who I am... Okay. She is our building coordinator from Fridell Middle School, and she is retiring this year. And I just wanted everyone to know that she is going to be sorely missed. She is always willing to help me when I'm having problems. Most recently, when spring break was coming up and all the students were getting ready for the State Science Fair, Christine Song had offered to have a workshop to help the students from middle school do some judging prep. And the day that she selected was a day I was flying for my spring break with my family. And Ms. Mache stepped in. This was on a Friday. It was after school, it was spring break, and she completely volunteered to help Christine run that workshop. So she will be incredibly missed. So yay, Ms. Michelle.
And now students, you can just introduce yourself, say your school, and which project you brought to the state competition today.
Is it not on?
My name is Zoe, and I go to Kellogg Middle School. And my project was on the effect of overexpression of cert one in zebra fish.
Hi, my name is Tim. I go to Lincoln, and my project was on detecting cyberbullying via keywords.
Hello, my name is Jack Wagner, and I did my project on how does color and color...
Hello, my name is Jack Wagner, and I did my project on how does color and color intensity affect the way we taste?
My name is Sarah Dingley. I go to Fridell Middle School, and my project was happiness in middle school students in the time of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Hi, my name is Danielle. I go to Century High School, and my project was titled, "The Identification of Long COVID Prognostic Biomarkers Via the Upper Restriem Microbiome Genome."
Hi, my name is Karthik, and my project was called COVID Apathy: How the Pandemic Affected Middle Schoolers' Mental Health. I go to Kellogg.
Hi, my name is Viviana. I go to Lincoln, and for my project, I designed a smart circuit to sort produce.
Hi, my name is Ava. I go to Lincoln, and our, me and Sylvia's project was how plants, how music affects the growth of plants.
I'm Sylvia, and I go to Lincoln, and that's my partner.
Hi, my name is Rathan DeGrae, I go to Fridell Middle School, and my project was determining the precision and accuracy of colony counting apps.
And I know I already introduced Mache, but just that Mr. ...
Yep.
Do you want to say hi?
And I'm John Haug, and I'm one of the two teachers that were helping with science fair projects this year and working with Ora Kuli.
If you have any questions, I'm glad I didn't have to say some of the titles.
No, that's so impressive. And right now, would all of you get together and turn around, because I bet there are a couple people out there who would like to take your picture. So just face the audience, please.
And squish.
And squish together.
Not too old.
Look proud. You have every right to. Congratulations. Yeah, you still have to go to school tomorrow. We have another group of student recognitions. This is the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Award recipients.
That was all the same group.
That was all the same group. We have another appreciation, 4.04.
Yes.
Teacher Appreciation Week.
So we are going to carry on where Mr. Wayland started us off and mark the occasion of Teacher Appreciation Week. And thanks to our videographers behind the scenes, we have a short video just to set the mood here, so we'll start with that. Peyton, can we get the video up? There we go. It's my honor to represent the Cabinet and the Superintendent, of course, in marking Teacher Appreciation Week. As you saw there, our teachers do their work in many settings, the traditional classroom, as well as many special activities, outdoor, you name it. And I would just encourage you maybe to think about your day today and all of the things that you did and the decisions you made, the path you took to get here, who you had relationship with in terms of conversation and discussion, maybe strategic decisions, and think back to all of those events today. I bet you would be hard-pressed to, not to think of something a teacher taught you along the way. So as I was coming in today, I thought about driver's education. And in my day, that was taught by the teacher during the classroom or during the school day. Did you speak a language you didn't speak when you were young? Did you have to put your thoughts into writing today? Did you have to consider all the factors that go into a strategic decision? Did you have to be patient or calm today? I bet your teachers had a hand in that as well. And of course, our first teachers, our parents, our caregivers, our families, they set the foundation. And then our formal teachers, whether they're licensed teachers, whether they play other roles in our educational system, they really set us up for success. So I remember the book that was popular a few years ago, All I Ever Needed to Know I Learned in Kindergarten. Well, I would suggest we should be crediting all of the teachers in all of the various forms that they have, from parent all the way through college and beyond, those people that we learn from and we keep learning all our lives from. I believe teachers are cut from a special cloth, putting the needs of others before their own, generously sharing their skills to help other people achieve their dreams. And we want to thank them today and every day publicly for all they do. So thank you.
Thank you. And a big round of applause.
I wanted to, Madam Chair, just briefly, building on what Amy said, I also want to acknowledge that this is a really tough time to be a teacher. On the cover of Education Week this morning, the headline is Teacher Job Satisfaction Hits an All-Time Low. And I'm not raising that, that can seem like a downer to raise that now, but I don't want to say it's a downer because we're committed to address that. But we know this has been, I've heard again and again and again, the most challenging year for people who've been in this work for years and years. And we want to say we see that, and we're grateful for your perseverance through that. And we want to partner to be sure that this national trend is not indicative of where we are in Rochester Public Schools. So thank you, Amy. The celebration is absolutely appropriate, and we also want to acknowledge the difficulty at this time because we need to live into that tension. And we have been and will continue to do so. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We also are going to be honoring our School Lunch Hero Day. We're not honoring the day. We're honoring our school lunch heroes. This is 4.05.
Indeed. So in this new role, helping with communications, I get to do all the fun things. So yes, this week is actually School Lunch Hero Week as well. And this is another group that we paused to honor today who worked tirelessly on behalf of others. And they are called nationally today, Our School Lunch Heroes. So we've come to know that keeping our children well-nourished during school is critical to their success in school. This is probably a no-brainer, but the research does bear that out. And so in the pandemic, I think that became even more clear how much our families rely on us to make sure that our students have access to nutritious food. And so our school lunch heroes here in Rochester Public Schools really stepped up to the plate. And one of the first pictures that you're seeing, actually both of those, are from Graham Park, where our SNS staff set up a drive-through meal pickup during the pandemic when our schools were closed so that families could have access. There is no limit to what they will do for helping our families. And last summer, for example, they served over 75,000 lunches and about 50,000 breakfasts across our various distributions. You see some of our folks here working hard in our John Marshall Kitchen. And we highlight John Marshall this year as an example of where we transitioned from regular school lunch and breakfast into this mobile preparation site. They were our central hub, along with, at times, Mayo High School, to prepare all of those many meals that we provided for folks. So I want to talk, or I want to give them some extra props. And they, pardon me, I thought there was one more. I would just call out that our SNS staff is also working hard to help our students see themselves and part of their culture in the menus that we serve. And you've read about the articles along the way about bringing the sambusas into the site, and we heard back from our principals about the comments kids made, "Oh, my grandma makes those." And chicken tikka masala and doing some Asian salads and things from, actually from our SNS staff, childhood and upbringing that they have shared and we've created into these menu items. So just want to mark how much they do to support our student learning every day. So Happy School Lunch Hero Day.
We will move on to 4.06, Board Member Committee Updates. Any board members have activities or committee work they've done they want to report on? Oh, Ms. Workman.
Yes. Kathy Nathan invited me to the, to the English Learner Math and Science Night last Thursday, and I learned how to make Martian, what were they called?
Jelly.
Martian jelly, yes, with, with students. And watching their reactions as the chemicals interacted with each, with each other was really, really quite fun. There were some students who were very, very little, maybe three or four years old, brought by their big brothers and sisters and a parent to experience this. And I would really encourage those who are looking for opportunities to volunteer in Rochester Public Schools to keep track of when these kinds of things occur so that you too can have the same kind of joy that I experienced last Thursday night with these kids. It was really, really quite amazing, and please invite me next year.
I was honored to have board members come and volunteer at the tables, and we also had a superintendent who mastered the art of launching rockets with the use of alka-seltzer and water. And we also had, Director Barlow brought his grandson to the event and looked like he enjoyed himself.
Oh, my grandson, not me. But I did one.
We do this night as a partnership with the Family Engagement Team and the Rochester Area Council of PTA, and we focus on our English language learners and their families because we provide an environment where we, where we hope they feel a little bit more comfortable. Our bilingual specialists are there. We have some photographs for instructions instead of just words so that they can follow along. And it is one of my favorite events to do every year. So I appreciate the volunteers who came. I hope everybody can make it next year, and maybe we'll do more than one.
Well, it was a huge event, and the number of student volunteers, high school students, who helped younger children do the experiments was amazing. And my favorite one was the balloon that you could put a stick through.
Without popping.
Without popping. It worked, but I still think it's impossible. Anyway, it was amazing. Other committee reports. I have one. I was honored to be invited by Rabbi Michelle Werner to attend a yom ha shua service at Benet Israel Synagogue in Rochester last Sunday afternoon. Through an act of Congress, yom ha shua has been designated as a day of remembrance to the victims of the Holocaust. From 1933 to 1945, the state-sponsored systematic persecution of European Jews, as well as people with disabilities, people of color, homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, and many other groups persecuted and murdered by Nazi Germany. Over 6 million Jews and millions of others ended up being killed. The rabbi shared a story about a tiny town in France that took in a group of 44 Jewish children from Poland. Their parents were terrified that their children would be killed, and they were desperately seeking a place where they could be hidden and be kept safe. Now, the people in this little town didn't know these children. The children spoke a different language, they had a different religion, they had a different culture. But they cared for these kids the same way they would care for their own children. They kept them safe. They made them feel accepted. Ultimately, the SS discovered where the children were hiding, and Klaus Barbie deported them, along with all of those who had helped them. None of them survived. The children hadn't done anything wrong. They were simply judged by the Nazis to be not good enough. And the Nazis decided they shouldn't be allowed to grow up. Now, in the synagogue, as part of the service, there were 44 chairs, and they were empty, except on each chair, there was a placard with the name of one of these children and that child's age. The oldest was 17, the youngest was five. At that service, Mayor Kim Norton read a proclamation that included these words, "We, the people of the City of Rochester, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And we should reflect on the need for respect of all peoples." It was a moving, powerful service, and I was so grateful that I was allowed to be present. Move on to 5.0, the Consent Agenda. Any items to be removed for separate consideration?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Then we will go to the Focus Topics, 6.0, School Start Times, Impacts, Cost Data, and Community Input Information. Dr. Pecow.
Thank you. Chair Marvin, if Ms. Silverson can help me get the PowerPoint out, because we will need, I'm going to inflict some data on everybody. Thank you. We're doing it. Yeah, somebody magically... Thank you. Keep on the background. All right. So Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, as you well know, we have been throughout this year taking a look at our school start and end times. This began back in the fall as the board wanted to get feedback on the changes that were made in our start times for the 2021-2022 school year. We partnered with two researchers from the University of Minnesota and did a study in which we found, to, I think, our general pleasure, that the shift in the start times for our older students achieved the board's goals of having students be more alert and engaged in school. However, we also got feedback from elementary teachers and parents that the later start time that we had moved to was impacting learning time for our youngest learners. And so when the board got that feedback, we decided there was an important need to take a look at the possibility of adjusting our current start times to address the problems for elementary students while not taking a step back from the benefits for secondary students. And so we did that in two different ways. We first of all, costed out what a different start time would look like, and then we sought feedback from diverse... And then we sought feedback from diverse stakeholders on a possible shift in that start time. I'm going to give board members now an overview of what we learned through a stakeholder older survey that we have had open for the last several weeks and then make a recommendation for the 2022-2023 school year. So just to be sure that we're all tracking here, the current start times in Rochester Public Schools begin with our secondary schools at 8:20 and our elementary schools at 9:35. The high schools get out at 3:30, the middle schools at 3:00, and the elementary schools at 4:00. So that's where we currently are. Those are the times that were instituted for this school year. We felt that we had a very limited capacity this late in the year and also in the midst of a pandemic, when many of our transportation staff have been out driving buses due to driver shortages almost every day, to look at only one alternative to these start times. As board members are aware, the transportation route structure in a city the size of Rochester is mind-numbingly complex. And it is aided by software, but it rests a lot on the deep knowledge that rests in the brains of a few people who know this city and its streets and where our kids live and where our schools are like the backs of their hands. So the one alternative that we had the resources to look at would have had elementary schools starting at 8:00 AM, middle schools starting at 9:15, and high schools also starting at 9:15. Now, are other possible start times possible? Yes, but we did not have the capacity during this school year at this time to examine them. So that was the alternative scenario we looked at. The first step, as I mentioned, was to cost it out. And when we costed this out and we shared this with the board at your last meeting, the core increase comes from five new routes that we would have to put in place regardless of a change in start times because of the new school boundaries that are being instituted next fall. And that came out at $324,000, $324,030. We also have a requirement to provide transportation service to non-public schools if they request it. We are reimbursed by the state for those costs, but there's a two-year lag. And so there would be an increased cost to the district if they chose to take advantage of that service. Every year, we have to have a conversation with them about if they're going to choose to do that. So regardless of any change in start times, there would be a $453,000, $453,642,000 potential increase, guaranteed $324,000 increase in our transportation structure for next year. So if we moved to the 8:00 AM start time for elementary schools, essentially putting them at the top of our transportation structure, that would require another five new bus routes, so another $324,030. And then another five routes for, the five routes for the boundary changes, another five routes for the alternative start times, and then again, the need to potentially budget for the non-publics if they chose to take advantage of our transportation services. So a potential increase in our transportation costs of $907,284, with some particular uncertainty in there for the non-public schools, but also the reality that moving to entirely new boundaries and opening new schools next fall makes this a very complex and fluid task. So my rule of thumb was we shouldn't even go out and ask for feedback from stakeholders if the total cost increase was more than a million. $907,000 is less than a million. And so while we are cognizant of those increased costs as we have a budget deficit that we're working to address, we went out for feedback. And here's what we learned. We got 9,499 responses to a web-based survey. There were three key focus groups, students, parents, and staff. Unfortunately, the way the survey ended up being designed, we differentiated between elementary and secondary students, but not elementary and secondary parents or staff. I think you'll still see in the data, it's pretty easy to guess who is who, but I wish that we had actually included that additional demographic breakdown. Lesson learned that we will keep in mind for future surveys. So here's the bumper sticker of what we learned from those almost 10,000 stakeholders. For elementary students, which was a small group, but we got some wonderful feedback from those students. 56% supported moving the transportation system to an 8:00 AM start for elementary schools. 28% opposed it. Our secondary students, almost the opposite. 82% opposed it, 11% supported it. For parenting adults, you can see a split there with a slight preference to opposing the change, staying with our current start times. And you can see it's a bit flipped with staff, with 54% supporting the move to an 8:00 AM start for elementary schools and 54% supporting it and 41% opposing it. So before I break that down a bit more specifically, who is in these data? You can see there, while we did have representation from our diverse communities in Rochester Public Schools, it was not proportionally representative. There were more white respondents than some of our communities of color. So important to keep that in mind as we're looking at this data. We see that the largest percentage of responses came from people identified as female. You can see we got a lot of responses from students and responses from parents, parenting adults, and staff in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. So, and then one final, the majority of our respondents speak English as their primary language at home. Again, something to keep in mind as we're looking at these data. When we break it down by role within the district, you can see that about half were parents or caregivers. Then our secondary students were the next largest with 34%, followed by staff and elementary students. There was a separate line there for Phoenix Academy and RAIL, but in the end, we didn't have responses from those schools and didn't need to break out the data separately, but they're represented there as a demographic marker. As I'm looking at, as I'm going through these data, let me stress, I picked representative pieces of the data we received because I think they're most useful to the board as you consider the recommendation I'm going to make in a moment. The full data set is available on board docs with all of the responses that we received. So anyone who's interested in that data set can look at it. I'm confident that I was representative of the feedback we received and just didn't want everyone's eyes to completely blur over with slides. So what did we hear? First, we're going to start with the views of our parenting adults. And you can see there that we have, and this is going to be a familiar theme through this presentation, we have got a pretty strong balance between parents who strongly agree with shifting to an 8:00 AM start for elementary schools and who strongly disagree. One of the things that is a valid way to read survey data like these is actually to combine the top two and the bottom two responses, to combine strongly agree and agree and to combine strongly disagree and disagree. When you do that, just with this chart, and I'm not going to do that with everyone that we're going to look at, that'd be 43% who were in agree or strongly agree and 46% who are in disagree or strongly disagree. Essentially, an exact balance between the views of parents. We also asked parents about the alternative start and end times would make it easier for their student to participate in sports or other curricular activities. And here you can see, while we did have some parents who agreed with that premise, the majority strongly disagreed with the idea that the start time shift would benefit participation in sports and extracurricular activities. The response to a question about holding a job outside of school was similarly skewed, though here you can see quite a few of the parenting adults, presumably of elementary-age kids, said it was not an applicable question because their kids aren't eligible to hold a job. But again, you can see some real parent concern about the impact of changing start times on employment. We also asked parents, really the key question, what do you think we should do? And when we asked that they believe, agree or disagree with the statement of adopting the alternative start and end times, we had 28% strongly agree, 12% agree, 7% were somewhere in the middle, but 13% disagreed and 40% strongly disagreed. Again, if you combine the top two and the bottom two responses, a fairly balanced response from our parents. What about students? Let's now look at the elementary kids. We asked how they would feel about being awake at 8:00 AM. And you can see 33% of them strongly agreed, 14% agreed. We did have 22% who strongly disagreed. So that critical question of alertness was something that resulted in some differential responses from our elementary school students. When we asked them for their opinions on the start time for school next year, there was really quite strong support from elementary kids for starting at 8:00 AM. 39% agreeing, strongly agreeing, 70% agreeing. But you can see we did still have a significant group of young people who disagreed with that response. So shifting to our secondary students, there, we were asking the elementary students their opinion of going to school starting at 8:00. In this instance, we're asking our secondary students about their opinions on going to school at 9:15. And here you can see we had very strong disagreement from our middle and high school students on the 9:15 start time for their schools, though we did have some responses down there, the 12% and 15%, who did see some merit in changing time from their perspective. We asked our secondary school students about participation in sports and other extracurricular activities if we shifted start times. And here you can see a very strong disagreement on the part of those secondary students that this start time would work for their extracurricular activities. We asked them, as we did for parents, about employment. And here again, you can see those high school students, on the whole, strongly objecting to the shift in start times tied to jobs after school. Finally, we asked the secondary students, like we did of every other stakeholder group, for their opinion on the potential change. And here you can see a fairly strong sense of disagreement from our middle and high school students about shifting to the alternative start times. Our final stakeholder group were staff. We asked first, do you think your students would be more alert if elementary schools started at 8:00 AM and the high schools were at 9:15? We saw quite a bit of support from staff, who are strongly agreeing that that would be a good time in terms of the alertness, but a significant percentage nonetheless who did disagree. We asked them about their teaching, the ability to meet the needs of their students. And here again, you see some significant support for moving elementary schools to 8:00 AM, but also some significant opposition to that concern. And here's where I really do wish we were able to break the data down by elementary and secondary. I think it's, one fairly reasonable supposition is that the support for the start times is stronger among elementary staff and lower among secondary staff. But unfortunately, we can't break that data down that way and confirm that fact for you. We asked about job satisfaction, actually. And here again, we saw a pretty striking parallel between agree and disagree in terms of responses from our teachers and other staff. And then finally, we also asked them the kicker question, what do you think we should do? And here again, their responses were what we might call bimodal. We had a significant group of staff strongly in support and another, not quite as large, but nonetheless significant group that strongly disagreed. So when you look at this data, that's an actual train wreck from France in 1895. This may feel a bit like a train wreck because I think a lot of people were hoping, myself included, for a really clear sense of direction, not just from our community, but also through the financial analysis and the other analysis that we've done, which board members have in their supporting materials for today. But I don't think it's a train wreck. I think sometimes we have those problems that are very clear problems between right and wrong. I would submit, as a former social studies teacher and just a citizen, we have one of those clear problems in Ukraine right now. It's a right and wrong. I think many of our challenges in Rochester Public Schools in the years ahead are going to be challenges between right and right, where we have got to make difficult decisions between very valid, competing priorities with tight resources. And so the question then becomes, what do we do? The recommendation that I'm about to share is one that I'm not entirely satisfied with because it doesn't solve the problem. It takes some steps in that direction. But I like this graphic because I think if we don't see this as the end of a journey, but as a next step on one, and one that is not linear and that is unquestionably taking some twists and turns, I hope people will hang in there with us as we work to address the feedback that we've gotten from student, staff, and parents at all ends of the developmental continuum. Because this is what is sometimes called a wicked problem. It's a problem where when we push on one piece of the problem, we move other parts of it because it really is an incredibly complex dynamic system, not just our transportation system, but Rochester Public Schools as a whole. And so with that as background, my recommendation is that we do not move to the alternative start time with elementary schools starting at 8:00 AM for the upcoming school year, but that we take a small, but I think still significant step in that direction, which I'm confident we can do with no increase in transportation costs. So to remind everybody, our current start times are on the screen. And what I would recommend is that we move them up 10 minutes. That would have elementary, high schools starting at 8:10, middle schools starting at 8:10, and elementary schools starting at 9:25. Is 10 minutes going to fully address the questions of being alert in class that many of our elementary educators and parents have raised? And also, I should add, some parents have raised concerns about getting to their jobs in the morning. No. But I think it is a significant down payment on what I hope can be a year-long effort during the course of the 22-23 school year to come back to this issue and seek to find a better balance for start times between our elementary and secondary learners. So why wait? What might be different a year now, a year from now? When the, and this predates me, but when the school district redesigned our boundary changes and opened new schools, those decisions largely were based upon enrollment projections and looking at the demographic flow of our schools. They were not designed with start times in mind. And if we are willing to take a look at our full transportation system and how far our routes run across this very large community, it could open up significant opportunities to shift our start times. We don't have the capacity to do that for the upcoming school year, but it is something that would be possible if we give ourselves a year to do that work. Second, we will have had a year with our new boundary changes and our new schools in place and the closure of Fridell Middle School. And so that will give us a much better understanding than we currently have right now of the actual logistics of running our transportation system with the boundary changes and with the new schools in place. I think also, if we approach this problem with the kind of transparency and attention to data and research that this board has given it this year, and we continue to recognize that there's nobody here trying to do something stupid, that these are just really tough balancing priorities at a time of constrained resources, I think we have a good chance of putting our heads together and coming up with some different solutions. And then finally, there's, I don't know exactly what the quote was, but there's known unknowns and there's unknown unknowns, or whatever the famous quote was. I think we have learned so much this year about start times and about the applications, especially for our elementary students, that we would learn a lot over the course of this year. Before I conclude though, and I couldn't find a better picture than this, it's probably not a very good one because it's actually a serious issue. I do want to say to teachers, to parent professionals, to principals, to parents at the elementary level who have said that our current start times don't work for many students educationally, we heard you. We heard that. It is a significant concern. It has not been forgotten, even though we don't have the capacity to fully address it for the next school year. It's something that won't be forgotten. And I'm sure that's not just my commitment, but that board members, regardless of the decisions that you make tonight, also take those concerns very, very seriously. And I hope that people who read about this understand we looked at this as hard as we could and couldn't find a solution that doesn't have really negative consequences for many of our oldest learners, as that data just showed. And so again, to summarize, my recommendation would be for next year that we move the system earlier by 10 minutes as a step in that direction to get some of our youngest learners a bit closer to that prime learning time without sacrificing the benefits of some later start times for our secondary students. And with that, I'm glad to both take questions and then obviously, this is an important subject for board discussion.
Ms. Workman.
This isn't really a question, it's a comment and it bears repeating and repeating and repeating. So anybody else who would like to say the same thing I did, feel free to jump in, assuming you would agree, is that even if there were six or eight or $10 million that was suddenly dropped into our school system so that we could afford to run a single-tier system, that's not going to get the job done. The reason being, there are not enough school buses. The reason being, there are not enough school buses to do that, and there are not enough drivers. So the financial piece is a piece, but even if we could figure that out right now instantly, we would still have these real-life issues to have to overcome. I know we've all gotten a lot of email from parents who are saying, well, just start everybody at eight-thirty. We can't. It's not because we don't want to, we simply can't. And for people who say, well, do it anyway, I will repeat. Even if we had all the money that we needed to double our transportation costs to do that, we don't have the drivers, we don't have the buses. So if somebody would like to figure out that piece, I'm sure that the superintendent and the board and the entire community would love to hear your input on how to solve that. So I'd love to hear from a lot of people on that.
And I don't think anybody needs to repeat that, Ms. Workman, because you said it with a lot of emphasis.
I know, she said it twice.
Twice, message delivered. You know, the other piece of that, too, and we have gotten plenty of emails on this, and all of them, as Dr. Pikel said, all of them came from people who were right. Couple of things that I think are not immediately apparent, our high school kids are in school an hour longer than the elementary kids. Middle school kids' school day is thirty minutes longer than elementary. So many of the notes we got said the start times are fine, but the end time is either way too early for elementary or way too late for middle school and high school. And that was the thing that was lousing up their whole family plan, so they were really opposed to that. You know, as Dr. Pikel said, it's complicated. And we've been looking at the survey results for quite some time. We've gotten your emails and we appreciate those, because everybody has made good points.
Ms. Nathan.
One of the other things, going back even a little farther in history, to what our start times were before COVID, these, the proposed ten-minute shift, if we think about what our start times were before we changed it, the new start time for middle, for high school would only be thirty minutes later than what it had been before COVID. Same thing for our middle schools. And for our elementary schools, it would only be ten minutes later than what it was before COVID. So without the intermediate year, if you think back to where we were before, if that system was working well for you as a family, it's a ten-minute shift for elementary and a thirty-minute shift for middle and high school. Not quite as dramatic as the proposed that we surveyed.
Ms. Barlow.
Two comments. One, it's important, I believe, to at least acknowledge that it's not a local problem in terms of buses and/or drivers, it's a national problem. So we're just affected like districts across the nation are. And then secondly, how will our current strategic plan potentially be a tool that we can utilize as we build into a twenty-two, twenty-three opportunity? Can you perhaps touch on that briefly?
Yeah, Dr. Barlow, there is a provision in the plan, which the board will review, and I'll vote on the twenty-first of June, that talks about getting the portfolio of schools right, to be sure that we have the focus areas and the types of schools that are going to make us the educational provider of choice in Rochester, and the attendance areas that work for those schools. We have a number of routes, transportation routes in our system, particularly involving the district-wide option schools, that run far and wide across our community and that have a very big impact on the options in the rest of the system. Now, that is not a small discussion, that's a very important discussion for us to have, but shifting the area of transportation essentially provided to our schools, absent, as Director Workman said, someone giving us lots and lots of money and more people deciding to become bus drivers, is the lever that we can push to shift start times. Constraining the routes on one hand is a tool, but there's a paradox here. In some cases, you could actually expand the routes to give people somewhat more choice within a region of the city, thereby having buses make lots of short trips. That's the magic formula, that if you can get to the point where rather than buses making few long trips, you have them making lots of short trips, that there's the possibility of some start times that don't need as much buffer between the tiers that happen, and that just don't have drivers out there on quite such long routes. So that would be the part of the strategic plan through which we would essentially be thinking of the chessboard of Rochester Public Schools. And I think what has come out of this discussion this year, really different than when we started the work on the strategic plan, is that start times really matter. They really, really matter to people, and that it needs to be a top factor as we consider what people want in Rochester Public Schools. Just as further evidence of that, it was striking to me when I learned that we used to transport lots of those non-public schools, but when we moved our elementary start times to nine-thirty-five, they said, well, no, that doesn't work for us. And so it was, start times mattered so much that they actually gave up publicly subsidized transportation for their students, because those are deal breakers for certain families. And so I think that as we enter that part of the strategic plan, keeping start times as one of our top factors that we're trying to balance would be the way we could, I think possibly, I don't want to make it seem like it's going to be easy, but possibly make it work.
Thank you.
Ms. Amundson.
So ten minutes is going to be a small incremental change. Is it possible that no change at all would be a little bit more beneficial to students and families? You're trading, you know, ten minutes of time in their day, but it's yet another adjustment. Might it be better to not mess with it again?
And Director Amundson, I think it's, we should always weigh the costs of action and inaction, exactly as you're suggesting. The reason I'm persuaded that this makes sense is because what we heard, especially from ninety-seven percent of our elementary teachers, was so academically focused. They were really saying that prime learning time with our youngest learners is not being maximized. And so will ten minutes sort of suddenly change all that and the reading scores will go through the roof? I'm sure not. But because we heard that so strongly from our educators, I think that ten-minute shift, while it might create some inconveniences for, you know, some families and some shifts, I think it recognizes what we heard from them as important. And I think it frankly shows that we are sticking with it and we're staying with the effort, so that hopefully there is some sense that not only were they heard, but within constrained resources, we took some action. But it's a balancing act, that's for sure. I haven't gotten, in the discussions we've had, and we didn't do another survey about the ten-minute shift, for obvious reasons, but in, I've had a lot of discussions about it in the last few weeks. I haven't had anyone suggest that it would have a lot of dominoes because it's just ten minutes, in terms of like childcare or other factors like that. So knock on wood, I think it's meaningful, but not highly problematic for any one part of our community.
Can I just ask a question about how do we as a district communicate changes like this to not just, obviously, our family, because I get those communications, but like other programs, other organizations out in the community that are providing childcare, that offer extracurricular opportunities or options for our kids?
Dr. Garcia, it's a critical question, as I know you also know, in our new strategic plan is a very strong emphasis on greatly enhancing our two-way communication, both with families and with community partners. So going forward, we are going to be talking a lot about how to strengthen that right now. I will say, in my experience, and if other folks in the cabinet want to jump in, you certainly can, we have got a pretty solid list of early childhood providers in the community, and we've got, of course, the direct conduits to all of our RPS families and staff. So we certainly would lean in very heavily with messaging to those known entities. There is a problem with that, though, as I think you're alluding to, which is that where we don't have a direct connection to somebody, reaching them can be a real challenge. And we'll just need to be really, really creative, especially working across languages in particular. One thing that'll be fun to provide the board with an update on, we've adopted over the past year, an app called Talking Points, and it's text-based, and it is instantly multilingual with an immediate translation of a text to anybody in another language, and, which, you know, there's Google Translate, you could sort of do it, but it's text-based, which is how a lot of our families communicate. What's really cool is that if that parenting adult gets the text and doesn't understand something, they click a button, and then they get a live call from a native speaker who actually explains what the text says, if the translation was good enough. And I was over at John Adams and talking with a teacher, and she said it's just revolutionized her ability to directly connect with families, including families whose first language is English, because they're much more, much more, they're not email, it's not an email culture in a lot of our community, it's more text-based. So that's something that we'll also lean into really heavily. And we do need to get the, that's one reason why I know that the chair is hoping we can have a decision tonight, because we need to get the word out to families, because they are looking to make decisions about childcare and other things.
One of the reasons I ask is because I recognize it's going to be a hardship for someone, right, one of our, any group of our families. And I'm thinking if we as sort of a larger employer, and we take up a lot of, you know, time and space in this community, if we are helping for our families to influence other organizations or agencies to aid our families in this change, I think that would be helpful. So if you and/or other organizational leaders have meetings of the mind in which you explain, we're going to make the shift, might you change your programming, or how can we support you in changing your programming, so that now our families have the ability to drop their kids off for this particular out-of-school activity, whether it's something like therapy, swimming class, hockey, whatever it is, that they recognize that. Because I think Mayo, and I don't know necessarily that they take this for granted, but a lot of our city is just like, well, whatever Mayo's doing, we have to kind of fit around that, like our transportation schedule and a lot of other things. And I feel like we're big enough to make that, you know, part of something that we do as well, is to make sure that we're not just communicating to the families and expecting them to like make magic happen, but that we're also communicating with our community partners so that we can say, all of these people that you service are going to be impacted one way or another by this, and can you help us support them, so that, you know, we're sort of offering a wraparound service.
Thank you. That's a great point. We will definitely work that into the plan.
Ms. Nathan.
And building on what Dr. Garcia said, I think one of my frustration with the previous conversations about start times is that we knew there was going to be a ripple effect on particularly outside of the district extracurriculars, community sports organizations. And my concern was, if we built it, they weren't going to come. And I think that's what we're seeing when we talk about the later end time for our high schools, is that we were building a different start time, and nobody else was changing any of their structures. We didn't really give them the time. But that's one of the advantages for me of doing an incremental change and then looking at it more long-term, is to really have a conversation about, and it's not just what time things start, it's the interaction of gym space in our buildings, what times are optimal for young athletes to participate in activities versus older. You know, we heard from our high school speaker tonight about how we're not going to bed any later if you're going to push our activities even later. So to me, that whole vision, not just of the childcare piece, not just of the work piece, but also holistic approach to, we recognize that these activities and these sports are very important for our kids, but how can we make it healthy in the context of when they're in school and when they're out of school?
You know, and another point that you've made before, but I think needs to be emphasized, the way our transportation system works now is that we need an hour and fifteen minutes about between tiers. So when people are saying, just get them, the start times closer together, we can't. We don't have the buses to do that. We need that much time between the two tiers that are running to get the kids. And we did hear, as I said, from a number of elementary parents and staff all year who've been saying, kids are shot in the afternoon, they're tired, little ones just aren't learning the way they should, and they're correct. And then we've been hearing from parents who are saying, if my child gets out of school at two-thirty in the afternoon, and his big brother or sister doesn't get home until four-thirty, I can't afford daycare. You know, I count on the older brothers or sisters to take care of the family, that's how our family works. So I think they saw the dilemma, there were so many different issues involved, and they continue to be involved. But I kept looking at these two options, and I just kept thinking, neither one of them works. They're both good ideas, but neither one of them is going to work for this district. So I really believe that we need more time to figure out what's going to work for more of our students, our staff, and our families.
And I think one of the pieces of data we didn't really have clearly in the last time we did the study was not just the impact of extracurricular activities for our secondary students, but holding a job outside of school. If I read the data right, and the number of respondents from our secondary students was thirty-two, about thirty-two hundred, there were only eight percent who said it wasn't applicable to them, having a job outside of school or no experience. And I think that was a factor we didn't really zero in on the last time we had this conversation. And it isn't just for extra pocket money. I think we're hearing from our teachers that they know of students who are actively participating and supporting their families. So I think we also have to recognize that factor.
So Madam Chair, while there is a motion on the floor, the superintendent did say he had hoped that we were going to possibly move this to action or act upon it this evening.
Well, and this isn't really something, I mean, this is the superintendent's decision, and I'm thinking what you're looking for is consensus.
Okay.
Ms. Workman.
I think it's a good stopgap between what we're currently doing and what potentially might be better. And we really do need at least another year to explore all of those kinds of options. And let's have more community involvement with partnerships and everything else. And I know that's something that you really have a feel for, and you're devoted to it. And so I support this change for next year.
I do as well.
I'm not seeing any fists hitting. So I'm thinking what you're hearing is the board supports this.
I appreciate that, and I want to thank Scott Sheridan and Jeff Cappers in particular, who did really heroic work in helping us both cost this out and map this out. I have learned, kind of the hard way, when you talk about this, it's critical to remind people that we have entirely redrawn the map of the district for next year during this period. So if people say, wait a minute, why are they continuing to consider this, can't they just make a decision? We have completely changed the transportation system during this time period. And so it's not a function of just analysis paralysis. The whole, I don't play chess, but I keep using this analogy, the whole chessboard has changed for next fall, and so that makes figuring out this potential shift in start times very complex and uncertain. And so I'm very appreciative of the fact that the board is willing to support this shift and give us this year for some deeper look and analysis, very much tied to the other issues that we'll be working on through the strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Pikel. We'll move to eight-point-oh-one policy and procedure recommendations. There is one policy, and there are two procedures that are going to be briefed for the first time.
Policy Committee.
Policy Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair. Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, was going to join us tonight, but she was unable to, so this responsibility has passed to me. Ordinarily, you see our policy and procedure recommendations come as a group, and we list them all for you, but there are two sets that, of policies that we're talking about that we think are that we think are of particular interest to you and the community, because they involve some significant opportunities for community engagement and, and communication. And the first is the policy six oh six, Textbooks and Instructional Materials, and the associated procedures, six oh six A, six oh six B, and six oh six C. We are reviewing these policies as part of our three-year standard policy review, but when we came to reviewing these, we saw that there were some, some significant differences between the current status of our policy and recommendations from MSBA model policy from this year and also from previous years. So we wanted to make sure that that aligned. And we also wanted to take a look at the procedures, particularly the reconsideration procedures for curricular materials, to make sure that it was as clear for those individuals who might be interested in participating in it, and for the members of the staff to how to handle those requests, and then ultimately, what is the reconsideration committee that actually undertakes those if they're brought forward. So I'm not going to walk through each individual policy, those are available, and, and like our usual policy structure, this comes for a first briefing, then it comes for a second briefing, and then it will come back for a final vote. So anyone from the community who wants to provide feedback has that opportunity to do so. But we are going to just walk through the flow chart of the reconsideration process, which Ms. Iverson is putting up for us.
And we love flow charts, so this was a lot of fun.
It really, yes. That's one word for it. Some members of the, it was fun.
Giving, giving the visual guidance to the community, I think is helpful for everybody.
It is. So Procedure six oh six B has this flow chart in words, but this is the accompanying graphic. So if there's a, if there's an individual with a concern about a curriculum resource, they first usually bring it to the attention of a teacher or a media specialist, and then that person will be directed to the building principal. The building principal will provide the person with a copy of Policy six oh six and Procedure six oh six B. And then we have a form called the Request for Reconsideration of Educational Resources to, for the individual to complete and return. This way, we're receiving a standard set of information from all individuals who might have a concern with an educational resource. Then the principal will arrange a meeting with the person who submitted the form, and then any staff who have knowledge of the curricular resource, within ten business days of receiving the form. So we have some time limitations, so that individuals know that their requests are being addressed in a timely manner. And then we have a form for the staff to complete, called the Certified Staff Rationale for Educational Materials Use. Now, if you take a look at Policy six oh six and Procedure six oh six A, it specified how the district undertakes the process of selecting materials to be used in our curriculum. And those individuals who work with the curricular materials have an understanding as to why it was chosen in the first place and how it's being used, and that's the information that they would provide on this form. Then there's a meeting between the principal and the staff member and the person who submitted the form, and they'll review the request for reconsideration, and they'll also review the, the form that was submitted by the staff. And following that meeting, the individual who first raised the concern has four options. The first option is to ask for an individual student alternative instruction plan. Now, this is available to any parent of any student who has an objection to the curriculum in the classroom, and requests an alternative plan for, to how that standard and that instruction will be delivered. And then the reconsider, and in one case, the reconsideration process is ended. The person might want to continue to have the material reconsidered, or they might ask for an instructional plan and want to have the material reconsidered. So it'll move further on in the process. Go to the next page. If the individual wants to move on with the process, the principal will contact the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction and forward the forms that have been completed. And then the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction has five days to schedule a meeting with the person who submitted the form, and then have a conversation as to whether, whether the individual wants to consider, continue the reconsideration process. If that's the case, then the Curriculum Instruction Office will schedule a meeting of the District Reconsideration Committee, which I'll talk about in a minute, within twenty business days of their meeting with the person of concern, and they'll feed, they'll loop back to the staff and the superintendent. The District Reconsideration Committee will meet and make a decision, and that decision will be sent to all the involved individuals. And if the individual who submitted the original request does not agree with the decision of the reconsideration meeting, that can be appealed to the school board. But under policy, the only thing that can be considered is the process that was used, not the decision. And then the reconsideration process is ended. So what this flow chart summarizes is a requirement in state statute, that all districts have a process for reconsideration of materials. And Procedure six oh six B provides more specifics of each of these steps, and also details the members of the District Reconsideration Committee, which will include a school board member, a building principal, an elementary teacher, a secondary teacher, a library media specialist, a middle, middle school or high school library media specialist, a student from a district high school, a parent from the district, a member of the district diversity, equity, and inclusion team, and a resident of the district, not a parent and not a student. So it's representative of a broad representation of our community. That's the overview, without getting into too much detail. Any other comments from my policy committee, or?
Can I just, just make this clear? I mean, it's a complicated, it's a long process. And, the, two things here. One is that if I want the district to change what it teaches all the kids, that I want something removed from the curriculum, so I think it's objectionable for my child, and I don't want anybody else's child exposed to it, that's a long process.
Yes.
If there's a, a book that someone's teaching, and I want my child to be given an alternative book, that's, that's not going to take weeks or months.
That's the individualized.
That's a very, relatively simple thing. Talk to the teacher.
Yes.
Talk to the principal, done.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Lots of work on flow charts, but, so for anyone who is interested in looking at this in detail, it is in Board Docs. The flow chart is there, along with the reconsideration handbook and the forms that have been updated.
Moving along then to eight point oh two, another, two policies and one procedure. First briefing on these.
So this is the second policy we wanted to highlight, because it does involve the locus of a lot of the board's community engagement. Policy two thirteen deals with our school board committees, and what we wanted to do with these two policies was really clarify the difference between a school board committee that is made up exclusively of school board members, so that would be Policy two thirteen. And then two thirteen oh one are our community advisory committees or other commit, other groups that school board serves as liaison to, that involve not just school board members. So for Policy two thirteen, you'll see the only change was that we specified the three school board committees, which are the policy committee, the community engagement committee, and the legislative committee. And then in two thirteen oh one, we gave a little bit more detail about what a community advisory committee was, and we clarified some titles of the committees and the advisory councils that board members participate in or receive information from. And we also clarified that we're going to provide charge statements for each of the committees that a board member participates on in the procedures. And we don't have all of the charge statements finalized, but it was important for us, in Procedure two thirteen oh one A, to include the draft charge statement of a new community advisory committee, the Community Budget Finance Advisory Committee. So the superintendent has talked about this in the past, we've talked about this at the board table, that we think it would be beneficial to charter and establish this committee in our community as a standing organization, so that they can tackle, over the longer term, many of the issues that we're going to be grappling, when we grapple with year to year in our budget. So I'm going to ask my fellow policy committee members to jump in, should they choose, but I have to give credit to Director Amundson and Director Workman for really taking information from previous finance committees of the district, and also looking at what other districts do to, to structure this charge statement. And then we also received input from Mr. Carlson and from the superintendent. So, again, the charge statement is in, I won't read it, but just to give you a sense, it would be limited to a maximum of thirty-two members. It doesn't have to be thirty-two members, but that would be the maximum. And it would represent the community and include members from teachers, principals, building administrators, other staff, employees of Color Resource Group, parents who are not also district employees, students and community members, and try to have a representation from various buildings and various levels, elementary, middle, and alternative programs. Two school board members would serve, and the idea is to stagger who is on this committee based on when they are elected to office, so that we always have someone representing on the committee.
It's a two-year term.
It is a...
There was some flexibility in that.
Two-year term, yes.
It can be renewed, but the idea is that everybody, if everybody starts at the same time, and it's a two-year term, then everybody gets it. So it'll probably fall into place after a couple iterations.
And some preferred qualifications for people who have an interest or familiarity with finance, economics, or accounting, business and financial matters, and other experience in school finance. The idea is to have them meet six times per year, and to have them present to the school board meeting at least once per year, but with other periodic reports to the superintendent as appropriate, and of course, tied into the cycle of when we make our budget decisions. And I think the goal is, if we go through these three briefings, we would approve this by the end of June, and that would give us plenty of time to start marketing and recruiting, so that we could kick it off with the beginning of the school year.
Excellent. Yes.
I, I would just say, really briefly, during the years I spent in St. Paul schools, we had the Citizens Budget and Finance Committee, CIBFAC, and everybody in St. Paul knows what CIBFAC is. It was a very important source of expertise and input for the board. And when you are making these difficult decisions that are unavoidably part of our work, they're complex, and asking someone from the community to get smart about the Rochester Public Schools budget in a one-hour budget input session, which, you know, John and I did many of them this past winter, it's a good thing to do, but we want some people who can go deep, and people who can actually really learn the specifics of our budget, so that they can provide us with advice and hold us accountable for some goals. So I'm thanking the board for moving this forward, I'm very enthused about it. For anybody out there watching who cares about the effective use of resources, and especially if you have some expertise in that area, we really hope you'll submit your name to join in this committee, because I'm very enthused about it. I know I'll take their opinions very, very seriously.
Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I, I think, once again, it's important that the community understands that this is a committee that would simply make a recommendation to the board, it does not have decision-making capacity.
Ms. Amundson.
And I just noticed the type of, sort of, it's my fault, because I was the one working on this document, and the title of the document says, Community Budget/Finance Advisory Committee Charge Statement, and that's because we hadn't decided yet, we wanted to be budget, or we wanted to be budget. And I think we settled on budget. So I would just submit that we mark out the word slash finance.
And I think the other piece is, the superintendent mentioned that he and Mr. Carlson had done these budget input sessions and had done this great, the great videos where you've informed the public. Having this committee does not preclude
Right.
...that we wouldn't need to go to the broader community for input on various things related to finance. If anything, having this committee might help us to do that process better, because we would have people who'd be able to guide us on, on how better to get that information. But we're, we're, this is not the be-all and end-all in community input on our finances.
Excellent. Thank you. Then we have eight oh three and eight oh four, second briefing on policies and procedures. Any questions come up about those? These have been briefed already.
Can I, can I back up slightly? I'm sorry.
Sure.
When we look at Procedure two thirteen dot zero one A, and it lists the one charge statement under there, the intention is for us to continually review and work on the other charge sta, statements for the other existing committees that we have, we just haven't gotten there yet, and this was time-sensitive, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to back up.
Okay, moving right along then to eleven point oh one. Are there any issues the board members would ask to be considered for a future board agenda that are not already on our annual board calendar? By the way, annual board calendar, somebody suggested that we call that A B C.
D.
A B C, and if it's a draft, it'll be A B C D. I thought that was a really good suggestion. Whoever made that.
At least there's no failure, there's no failure in there, so that's good.
Brilliant, so.
That, that was your suggestion?
I didn't say that.
It, it may have been.
Okay, then, our up-courting board meetings will meet May seventeenth at five o'clock for a study session, June seventh, a regular meeting at five-thirty, June fourteenth, five o'clock study session, and June twenty-first, five-thirty, regular meeting. And this meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty P.M.